Finance Budget Report. Administration will update the Board on the budget. This item provides an opportunity for the Board's information and discussion.
Welcome, Susan. We're glad to see you. The first of many, probably.
Nothing like breaking the ice. Have my reading glasses handy, just in case. Good evening, President Logan, Superintendent Allison, members of the Board. I appreciate the opportunity tonight to give you a status update on our current year budget, fiscal year 2017 through January 31st, as well as discuss some concerns that we have with this year's current budget as we move through the balance of the fiscal year. And then we'll examine some of the challenges we're going to face as we begin the budget developmental process for fiscal year 18. This will not be a deep day-to-dive at this point. It'll be more of a high-level overview. So from a budget discomfort perspective, think dental cleaning, not root canal. So really, just very mild. And I will say, we do have some positives to report tonight as it relates to this year's budget performance. So we're going to hop right on into it. To take you briefly back to last spring, very briefly, and kind of reset the stage of where we were when we were planning for fiscal year 17, as you recall, under the block grant, we were in year two, or facing year two of the block grant, in which the supplemental general fund and general fund state aid were basically frozen at the 2014-15 level. And the district was facing $22.7 million of fixed cost increases and other increases, including $12 million needed to kind of shore up the health insurance reserves. And so for several months, very painful cost-cutting measures took place, changes that were necessary to balance the budget. And some of those major changes included changes to transportation, the health plan changes, calendar changes, several alternative program changes, and the elimination of about 39 positions in the non-attendance centers. And those were kind of the top five, but there were, all in all, at least 20 different budget adjustments made to balance, to get us to a balanced budget for fiscal year 2017. So at this point, it's probably good for us to look at how well we estimated those fixed cost increases, how well did the cuts cover those, and how well the budget is performing at this point in time. And again, focusing primarily on the general and supplemental general fund where our educational spending takes place, through the first seven months of the fiscal year, with 41.7 percent of the fiscal year remaining, we've used 41.12 percent of our budget. We have 58.88 percent of the budget remaining. Now, if we were in the private sector, the graph would be slightly reversed. But if you look at our spending trends, you can see we need quite a bit of budget authority as we approach June, when we pay out our teachers the final three months of their contract. So if we were sitting at 41 percent budget remaining, and we had a big balloon payment due in June, we'd be in trouble. So the question is, is 58.88 percent enough to get us through the remainder of the fiscal year? How well did we estimate how well is the budget doing? So what we did was, we looked at a three-year historical perspective, basically looking at the very same point in time, January 31st, of fiscal year 15, 16, and 17. And you can see that we are almost a straight line across. So we, this tells me our plan is working, that the cuts that we made covered our cost increases, and that we are right on track for this fiscal year. And that's very good news. I mean, really, that was 20-plus changes to the budget. That all of those factors are working is pretty impressive. And hats off to our employees for doing their share. We're seeing it in utility savings with the set points and keeping the door shut. They're doing their part. It's really, and Mother Nature's helping us out as well. I can't short Mother Nature on this as well. Very mild winter is definitely a plus. So these are all very good indicators that we're progressing well. But, there's always a but, there's two cautions and two concerns that we have as we look to the rest of the fiscal year. And the first concern is, as well as we're doing, there's a lot of fiscal year left. You can see the areas circled in red. Those are the days that things can still happen, where the plan can go out the window. If we think back just a few weeks ago, when we were having the threat of an ice storm, had it been just two degrees colder, we could have been facing significant ice damage. And we didn't budget for ice damage. We could have a major snowstorm in March, and have snow removal costs and damage. We could have a windstorm in April and May and June. Things happen throughout the budget year that we have to kind of cope with on the fly. But certainly, there's still quite a bit of exposure as we look to the end of June before we're through this budget year. And we have limited resources in which to deal with those unplanned events. And a fairly significant threat to those limited resources is our next caution, which is the threat of a mid-year cut. Senate Bill 27 was proposed last week, I think it came out of Ways and Means, that proposed a 5 percent cut to general state aid across school districts in Kansas. That total was $128 million. The district share, Wichita's share, would be $14 million of that cut proposal. And at this point, we can't make a 5 percent across-the-board cut to our budget. Many of our expenditures are made at the beginning of the fiscal year. Two-thirds of our teacher salaries have already been earned. It's just very difficult to come in at this late hour in the budget year and expect to make those kind of adjustments. So then we have to look at our limited options of contingency reserve, possibly the textbook fund, and squeezing the remaining budgets where we possibly can, none of which are very attractive options.
Lot of unknowns when we take a look at both a number of the bills that have been proposed around rescission. How does the state balance its budget for this year? This was one of the proposals by the Senate. There was a proposal that came out of House Committee today that did not involve cuts to the school district. It, in essence, uses the investment fund in its entirety. The Senate wanted to reserve a portion of that to use to offset the almost half a billion dollars in the hole for next year. So there's still numerous options that are being proposed. And then on top of that, you look at what does that mean around a new school finance formula, since block grants are sunsetting, and Susan will talk about that in a minute. But again, this seems to be kind of Groundhog Day for us. When we think about every time over, really, the last eight years, we get to this point in time in the year to talk about budget, and we have very little that's known. Under the block grant, we at least were told it would be flat, which we know isn't flat, and that there would be no cuts to K-12. The Senate proposal changed that, didn't follow through on no cuts to K-12. So there's just so many unknowns right now as we prepare to move forward with planning and conversation around the next budget. And it doesn't seem like there's going to be any quick answer to some of the unknowns at this point in time.
Mr. Rogers?
We might see some changes this week. Senate Bill 27 is pretty much dead. You know, the concept was basically that if, the thinking of leadership was that if we cut this much out of schools right now, they would feel so thrilled with a new funding formula that raised what they were getting. And it, you know, I kind of use it as the example of, you know, it's like, okay, go on a starvation diet for Christmas dinner so that you can eat Christmas dinner, and then you end up with hot dogs for dinner, so you're not too excited about what you get. The positive thing, though, is there has been a lot of movement since Thursday, when we were supposed to debate these. That cut went over like a lead balloon, and the community contact that Steve mentioned really did play a big part. And many of the new freshmen that were elected on an education platform have really been holding their ground. And so I think leadership has been coming around. And so we're, I just heard before I left today that there'll be a new bill that they're going to do the same thing in the Senate, that they're talking about in the House, of using the pooled money investment bond, and then have no cuts at all, and then redo the tax base for the following year. So I left very encouraged, knowing that it can always change again before the time I get back up there. So.
I think we'll be playing that what-if game very often through this budget session.
I guess what I want to say, though, too, is I've been reminding people, you know, these kinds of cuts, if we did a 5 percent cut even now, we have to really look at almost instantly turning around and doing another 5 percent cut next year, which for many districts will mean closing schools. Schools will, boards will have to start having hearings in March to do that. And it's not just Wichita. I mean, there's a lot of districts that that would ultimately affect. And so legislators, without having another funding formula in place, are going to put school boards through hell to, you know, to close schools. And then, because they said, oh, no, we wouldn't make them do that. Well, until we have a funding formula, we have to be prepared for the worst, and you have to go through that process now to do that. So some of those kinds of things, practical things of what boards have to do now to get ready for next year's budget have been very helpful to help other legislators understand. So.
Okay. So that does give us a good segue into our budget planning challenges for fiscal year 18. As we've talked about, the block grant does sunset as of June 30th of this year. So as of June 30th, and right now with no funding formula to replace it, we'll be working through the budget process really without that roadmap of how much funding are we going to get. And the state is in deep financial trouble. $325 million in cuts or revenues needed to balance the state budget for fiscal year 17, and there's $600 million upside down for fiscal year 18. So very, very serious financial difficulties the state is facing. And a decision on the Gannon case kind of awaits in the wings, which could really complicate matters, as far as if, whatever the decision that comes down, if funding is found to be inadequate, that just makes a complicated situation all that more complicated.
We do have a number of House bills that will get first hearings this week regarding the school finance formula, and they're all over the spectrum. You've got from basically reinstating the old formula to a version to what was proposed by, or requested by former House Speaker Mike O'Neill, which would be for the legislature just to wash their hands of school finance and appropriate whatever they had in the general fund for schools, and send that to the State Board and let them decide how it should be divvied up. So it would be just abdicating the legislature's responsibilities for funding schools. So you really see this huge variety, and I'm sure there will be similar activity on the Senate side here in the near future. So the formula conversation is starting to heat up. It's something we'll follow very carefully, provide testimony and input when necessary about any of these proposals as they move forward.
And we've started to collect some information on some fixed cost increases that the district will be facing for fiscal year 18. I'm sure it will come as no great surprise that we have inflationary factors kind of outside of our control, utilities, fuel, property casualty insurance. All of the players are back again, unfortunately, bringing some budget pressure for fiscal year 18. We are in the beginning stages of putting those numbers together, and as those really start to flush out, we'll bring those details back to the Board. So what are our budget planning next steps for fiscal year 18? We do want to take a step back and review the cuts to the budget that we previously enacted, if nothing else, to know where we've been and what we've done, and evaluate perhaps the impact of some of those, and if we need to visit those decisions once again. We have to begin the budget planning somewhere, so we're going to start assuming a flat funding, not really being flat, as we've said, but at least a starting point that we can build. And then we'll just have to be very flexible as we get more information out of Topeka over the coming months, up, down, all around, whichever way it ends up going. So we'll be keeping a very close eye on legislative action, so we know which direction we need to take. And again, we'll be collecting that data on fixed cost increases and bringing that back to the Board. So just kind of your three key takeaways. Fiscal year budget 17 has been proceeding according to plan. That's good news. But recent legislative action does present the possibility of some mid-year cuts that would have a very negative impact on this year's budget. We'll be watching the legislative action very closely. Fiscal year 18 budget planning will begin without a funding formula in place, and the state faces these catastrophic revenue shortfalls. Consensus on any solution to these problems will delay our budget planning process. And we'll open it for questions.
Joy?
I'm going to toss this one to Superintendent Allison. Could you talk a little bit about limited, if there were a mid-year cut, the limited options around the textbook fund, why we have that fund, what it's for, and what our plan is with that money?
Yes. And that's the devastating impact when you take a look at the limited options we have. If you take a look at our contingency reserve, you know, we're talking six, seven days of operation. Our textbook fund, over the last several years, we've been slowly trying to build that because we have a major math adoption that we'll be taking a look at this spring. So, you know, that's a sizable expense. And we need to be looking a year out, from a year to 18 months out, at our elementary reading. It's been almost eight years, and it's time to look at our next adoption. So we've slowly been building that fund, because when we talk about major adoptions, you're four to five million on the low end, and seven to a million or more on the high end, depending on the adoption. So if you had to tap into textbooks, if you had to look at the contingency reserve, those two funds for 14 million would basically take 20 to 30 percent of our textbooks, and they would wipe out our contingency reserve. The problem you get into then would delay our adoptions. We'd like to be on a five-to-six-year adoption plan. We're closer to eight to 10 years now because of the budget issues. If there's no hope of further revenue, new revenue, you can't rebuild those funds. So the only way to build those funds is through other budget cuts. So not only does it hamstring us when we come to what we need to do from a curricular standpoint, it's not like you can just say, okay, we'll do it next year without making those cuts in the next budget that would replenish that fund for those adoptions. So that's what's so incredibly problematic for schools when you're making cuts this late in the year and of that magnitude.
And just a follow-up question, but last year, when the A&amp;M did their review of different districts and their carryover budgets, am I correct in recalling that they found that Wichita's contingency reserves and other funds were within the limits that they were suggesting for school districts to be?
Yes, they looked at those averages. We were within about a percent of their projections.
Just to have the point that we're not just sitting on a bunch of money that we're not using for education. That money is there for reasons like textbooks or other items, end-of-year budget, where we spend, have more expenditures, and things like that.
Exactly. And again, we've, we talk about this every time we talk about budget, that when you look at our reserves for cash flow, unencumbered does not mean unbudgeted. So as you look at those, and you can see that swing that occurs at different times of year as those different budgets are expended. And the other thing that happens when they typically want to look at the reserve funds for school districts, or when they pick the point in time in which they want to account for those. And it's typically been in July, which is one of the highest points for any school district. When you look and follow our ebb and flow, as we've seen in budget discussions in the past, when we get into November and December, we're technically in the red. If we did not have some of these other funds to be able to cash flow, we'd be in a deficit. So you've got to have those aspects. I would say that that conversation that I've had with legislators this session, they seem to understand that. And there's been a better grasp of fund balances and impact to cash flow for school districts. So that's been a positive sign.
Thank you. Lynn?
I was just going to say, one of the things that legislators did was, they thought they could take contingency funds from all the school districts and leave, what they were going to do is leave 15 percent, based on the A&amp;M study, in everybody's account. And if they did that, what they found was that they would have to put 319 million into the school's contingency fund. So nobody was at the 15 percent, and no money over that. The second point, I guess, or question I have, is the textbook fund, as it is right now, isn't it primarily money generated from parents? When we buy something, I mean, we collect that from parents at enrollment, and then when we add to it for our free and reduced and whatnot, we just take that out of the general fund at that time. But if I'm not mistaken, the textbook fund really is parent money that they've given us to hold for textbooks.
There is a portion that's definitely parent money. We do put some in there as we plan for these budget adoptions. In fact, that was one of our cost increases last year, was that we were trying to get a little bit more into that fund so we could make these major adoptions. We plan, I mean, what a concept, we actually plan for an expense that we want to.
When state law requires, we have to have it in the bank before we can buy the textbook.
Right, we're saving for an expense we know we're going to have. So, but you're right in that there's some parent money.
There's some parent money. Okay, thank you.
And percentage of fees, Mr. Rogers, varies depending on the poverty level of the school district. So our textbook fees are going to be lower than a district with a lower poverty level. So you'll find, in some cases, textbooks, there is very little general fund contribution. And in other districts like Wichita or Topeka, you're going to see a much greater share.
Mike?
Make sure I'm tracking right here, and Joy might have to do the math for me. But we were cut $25 million last year because of block grants. We're talking about flat funding, which means another $25 million approximately in our next budget, possibly, maybe, we don't know. And we're cutting, possibly looking at another $14 million this year. My math adds up to $64 million that we're in deficit. Is that a fair statement? Is that, I don't want to put you on the spot.
Sure, sure. I'm going to try to repeat what I think, what I think where you were heading. Under the first year in the block grant, we cut about 14 million out of the budget because of cost increases, so that we could stay at basically a zero net effect. So that was 14 million. We basically peeled off of other expenditures so that we could stay even. And then this past year, it was close to $23 million we had to cut because of increases. And remember that half of that was the health insurance plan. So we won't really have, that particular piece is trending well at this point, so we don't anticipate having to do anything with the health plan for the next fiscal year. So what we'll need to do, and if we don't address, if we don't get the $14 million cut, and we stay with another year of flat funding, it will be what are the expenses that we anticipate going up, and what do we have to trim in order to stay again at flat funding? So that, right now, could be anywhere from 7, 8 to 15 million. I mean, we're just on the front side of making those estimates, so it's very difficult to say definitively today what number we're going to have to cover. But it, depending on a whole lot of different factors, including what might be coming down as far as a funding formula, it could be, you know, a significant cut, or it might be a little bit better than we anticipate.
So basically, what you're saying, in the last three years, we're looking at around $50 million in cuts, plus or minus?
36 million for sure, and then depending on what we look at for this year.
Right. And you know that's coming.
Well, I hope, the cautious optimist in me says, I hope not, so.
Well, I appreciate that. And my other question is, this may be to you, Superintendent. We're talking about the school books, cutting the funding there, and that creates, in my mind, a problem, because now we're taking steps back in our, basically what I call the equipment of the schools, to teach our children how to, and then we're giving them test scores based on books that we don't have. That puts us at a deficit pretty quick, and that's a bigger concern than the money, to me. Am I right in thinking that way?
Yeah, it definitely is detrimental in what we're trying to do educationally. The issue is with SB 111, where they provided districts some latitude around the funds. Textbook was included in that. And when you're talking 14 million, that's what we've got. It would not be where we would go starting a budget discussion. But when you take mid-year cuts, that's the cash on hand, and that's where we'd have to look. So it definitely sets districts several steps backwards in what they're trying to do instructionally, if that's what happens this late in the year. You're correct.
Is there, you know, we're talking about blood or books in this deal, in my mind, and blood being people. You know, are we, what other options do we have? I mean, are we out of options at that point?
This late in the year, if you're talking about a mid-year cut, yes. I mean, you could not, you could not look at staffing or any other area this late in the year. You've got contracts and everything else in place to be able to generate those types of cuts. You just couldn't do it. And that's why districts will have to look at really very limited areas for those cuts, their contingency, their textbooks, a few other funds, but they're not going to have significant dollars in it to be able to meet that type of mid-year cut.
And that brings up my last question, if you will. You know, we're talking about teacher contracts, staff contracts, that we've signed, and those are state contracts, as far as I understand, because they're paid with state dollars. You know, doesn't the state have, if we have to cut people, don't we have to honor those contracts, even if we cut them?
Yeah, the contracts would be in place. I mean, that's why there's, there are very, very few options available. You know, as we talk about this type of mid-year cut, you also have to think back, and what we've heard for a number of years, school districts need to spend down their contingency reserve funds. And you've seen districts across the state that have done exactly that and had to do that. And now we get to a point where they don't have those types of funds. So the other option, as I heard some of the school districts talk about it, again, you have contracts and commitments to people in place. It's shortening the school year. It's cutting extracurricular activities. If you don't have the reserve or the textbook funds, the contingency reserve, to be able to handle those types of cuts. So, you know, for some school districts, those cuts get to the material functioning of the school district for the remainder of the school year. I talked to one superintendent that they had whittled down their contingency reserve. They just utilized their textbook funds that they had for a major adoption, and said, as he looked at his projected 5 percent cut, the only way to do it was end the school year. It would be with a number of your classified staff that you'd be able to, in essence, riff and not pay for the shortened school year, and it would be to not move forward with any extracurricular activities between now and the end of the school year. That was their only option. So we have some options. They're not great at all, but it would not put us into that type of mode. But it sets us way behind as we look to the future.
Thank you very much.
I have a question, just so that I kind of follow up on what Mike had talked about. If we have to take a mid-year cut, it could be as much as $14 million, correct?
It could be that number, it could be less, it could be more.
That's right. But that's, we've kind of floated that $14 million with 5 percent cut. Then on top of that, that would be between now and the end of June. Then on top of that, that would be between now and the end of June. Then, starting in July, we could have to take another seven to fifteen million dollar cut on top of the fifteen, or the fourteen, correct?
The fourteen million dollars would, was presented as a one-time cut with a hopeful solution to the funding formula. So we don't know today whether that fourteen million dollars would be a continuation cut into the next fiscal year. It wasn't presented that way, it was presented as one time. So the possibility exists that they would also extend that cut into the next fiscal year, but that's really just one of those areas we just don't know.
Well, but the cut with just our, if we get flat funded.
And if you were wanting to, if you were wanting to restore those balances in any form or fashion, yes, you would have to start pulling more out of the, out of the pot to restore those balances, yes.
Okay. But, but I just want to make sure I'm clear, because I may be the one that's confused. I thought I heard you say we could, with flat funding, if we have to flat fund next year, flat doesn't mean flat for us. Last year, we had to take twenty-three million.
Right.
This year, we could have to maybe take seven to fifteen million, is that correct?
What we're, on a very, very rough level, looking at for fixed cost increases, that's kind of what we're looking at as possible fixed cost increases.
And that's with not adding anything back to contingency reserve or anything else. So the fourteen, if we had to take a mid-year cut now, or sometime before the end of the year, and just say it was ten million or fourteen million, we find that in contingency reserve and in textbooks and whatever ways we can find it. But that's not going to come back the next year, and we're going to take another cut on top of it.
Yes.
So it's just getting deeper and deeper and deeper into the hole.
Very, very difficult, yes.
Okay, thank you. I thought that's what you had said, but I just wanted to clarify. Thanks. I'm seeing no other questions? Great report. It won't be the last time we see you. One of these days, we're going to get to see you with good news, right?
I hope so.
Thank you very much.